Right, good evening everybody. And welcome to the annual town meeting for Ransay. This is not a council meeting, it is a meeting for us to explain to you as the local residents as to what the town council do. You're going to give your chance to ask us any questions that you think is relevant to you. As the Chair of the Town Council, I have the power to call this meeting and as your Chair tonight spoke on, please ask you to raise your hand when you want to speak, make sure you are called to speak and do not talk across from each other, others speaking is a way we can't hear what's being said. So unlike the council meeting, all residents have the right to speak and to vote if there is one. However, I should say that any votes taken do not commit the town council to any action. The matter must be considered by an authority through the normal decision-making process of their committees. So perhaps as well, if you could please turn your mobile phones off if you have one, or turn into silence. Do you remember if the exit is the way in which you came in? Unless you can find a towel this at the back there somewhere. So... But if there's a problem, then the Royal Committee can be open if necessary, or she's congregating at the front of the building. This meeting is taking place during pre-election period for the Kent County Council elections. This procedure, this is procedurally, this is acceptable because no council decisions are being made. Also, we must be aware as councillors, whether for a town council or district council or current county councillors, that we're in what's called further and we cannot make any political statements or anything of that nature, just have to do that so. And there should be no party politics at the meeting or promotion of candidates. I will also be accepting questions from councillors tonight who have the means of getting answers outside of this... Oh, sorry, I will not be accepting questions from councillors tonight, otherwise we will be hearing all of them, who have the means of getting answers outside of this meeting. This is an opportunity for you as local residents to discuss their concerns and elected members of the President to listen and to answer with candour. So item, that was item 192, is minutes of the town meeting held last year, so is to approve the minutes of the annual town meeting, October 20th of March 2024. The draft meeting can be reviewed on our website. So, you know, I had a person to... councillor Hartley, who's a second up. Thank you, Paulie Flaherty, thank you very much, that's Harry, thank you. So, I took really reports from Ransay Town Council and the reports on the town council's activities in 2024 to 2025. I'm starting off. So I'm councillor Albert, I'm the Chair of the council. And what I'm telling is as follows, I had the pleasure of awarding honorary freedom of the town to our RNLI last year. On a personal note, I found it just odd that it hadn't happened before and it was a bee in my bonnet to get this done. And it was a great time and we were lucky enough to have the Lord of the Sinkpots to attend that meeting when we gave the... We gave the freedom over and then we, the town council took all of the crew to the Royal Town of Clonaklaw, fed them and had them under barrels and it was very, very good, we said. Just to say that it all confirmed, was confirmed in a special council meeting on the 25th of September 2024, and it represents the council's highest honour paying tribute to the RNLI's exceptional commitment to protecting Ransay's waters and its community and anybody else who's passing by our lovely town and is in trouble, no matter who they are or where they come from. And I'm pleased to actually advise that they were given one of the highest honours from the RNLI for an event that took place off of Ransay in horrendous weather, forced end gales and the bravery of the crew was absolutely astounding and they got 48 people out of the sea. They were just incredible. As I said, we were joined by the Lord of the Lord of the Sinkpots for that award ceremony, who was delighted to be with us and for their special event. The council has awarded over £124,000 in grants over the past year. This has ranged from larger community service grants, for example, £20,000 for a supervisor at the Sill's Device Bureau, of which we consider the council is absolutely an immense thing and positive for our residents to be able to get, be able to get a vice. We also put forward, we also gave £17,000 for the continued activities of the pipe factory music place in St Lawrence. As you may be aware, Kent County Council are a couple of funding, so we're trying to work with them to try and keep them there because it's basically the only youth centre that we've got within the town and it is a, myself, councillor Green, and others have been there to see what they do and how they do it as it is and they just do a fantastic job. Don't think we can do support things like that, we do. And over 70 community organisations and groups have received grants ranging between £250 to £10,000 and for example, Friends of Spencer Square received £1,000 awards a tree and hedge project, £3,000 went to Discovery Planet for a programme STEM activities, £2,000 around Ransay International Film Festival 2024, £1,400 around Ransay Society for repairs of the cliff top shelters, £2,500 for the Newington Lights Festival, £1,000 around Ransay and Rosters Sea Cadets for support to set up their new venue within the port. We're working on a plan to increase access to defibrillators across Ransay. Two years ago, I was actually in the Albion Hotel and a guy came in and he said, he asked me what I was and what I'm doing and I told him I was Jerry Hutton. And he was a runner, a number of runners because they've all congregated this evening to go and run and in the east if there was no defibrillators. So we got the money, about £50,000 and I talked to the Albion Hotel and I had to see the Albion Hotel, so I didn't like us past the Albion Hotel, it's there, deep, it's there. But what I want to do is to get them in our parks, etc, just to make sure and then we'll put out big things so people can know where they are, so we're hoping to get that done and finished this year. We've joined with Thannick District Council and the Warret Scaphe Park Group to fund resurfacing of the data for courts and that is in your town, basically getting achieved as we speak. Consumer repairs are being undertaken at the Customs House, which is RTC's home and the rent review is currently being undertaken. The rent won't go down, but we are in line to save £20,000 over the land, over what the landlord wanted to increase the rent by. So we're back to fight two for now to get that down because that would then increase costs to residents, so we'd reduce costs if we can. The preset for 25, 26 increased by 3%. However, for a band B property, this means an extra £2.57 a year, not a week, not a month, a year. So they've just wanted to put that perspective as to what our preset for Ransay Town Council and what that effect is. Just under £5 a week, this small rise allows the council to keep improving Ransay without making a big impact on household budgets, which is obviously very important at this time. Our relationship with Thannick District Council has significantly improved on a few years ago and there have been a number of joint projects. For example, we've helped Thannick District Council clear the military road arches. Thannick Council has planted out our palms for us on the East Cliff. We store beers for Thannick District Council, Thannick District Council sees us as more of an asset to be worked, to be worked with than in the past and our teams work very well together and it's a very important part, I think, because effectively there wasn't any joint involvement and effectively, under the previous leaderships of the council, they've not seen the town councils as much as an asset, but currently, and I would say that most of us are TDC councils as well as town councils, so the pressure we've gotten as we are in control of TDC, we may be an important part, that we all work together. Right, okay. In addition to their normal work, our technicians undertake what's called Facelift Thursday projects, where they blitzclean specific areas that have been neglected. In the past year, this has included removing fly posting, stickers for periods, graffiti of Williams from the town centre, helping cut green areas in Prestige Avenue in Newington, helping to paint the major work that surrounds the Victorian shelters on the East and West Cliffs, litter picking in residential areas and clearing alleyways at the request of residents. So that's it from me, it's not everything, I can assure you, but that's quite a big part, so I consider it to be the most important part of that. So I'm now going to pass over to our current Mayor, councillor Ward, who's got your own speaker booth and bring that, councillor Ward, okay. Stand for your English.
Good evening, I'm councillor Ward, Mayor of Ransay, of the world. I'd like to tell you about what I've been doing this last year. But first of all, my motto for being Mayor is to serve, to support and to promote Ransay. That's what we're there for. At the beginning of the year last year, I was invited to Cheney, our twin town in Belgium, to collect an award, a Jurat de Nerd, translated to honorary councillor. All you want to do for this honour is to eat Cheney cheese and drink Cheney beer, cold and tasty. I had a wonderful time in such medieval surroundings, there's a beautiful chateau next to a 100-year-old brewery. I took gifts for the Mayor, etc., our twin members. The Deputy Mayor of Cheney came to my civic service last year and laid a beautiful wreath of fresh flowers at the Statue of Destiny in Albion Gardens. He did this because of, when we've gone over to Cheney to their celebrations, we laid wreaths and he wanted to reciprocate. He and his wife Chantelle came and we went for a game of croquet. Chantelle backed the floor with us. This was made up of as much of Ransay as possible for the gifts that I took, which you do when you visit. So I took the things that represented Ransay, so Ransay Rock and handmade soups. They're made in Ransay, I've seen them here made. And I took some prints of Ransay Harbour and Ransay Town and books telling you all about Ransay. Then what else could I take? What would be fitting? Ah, yes. Gads beer. Did the 100-year-old brewery, but what's that to do with ours? We have Gads beer, that's Ransay Brewery, so I thought they should be able to taste ours, so I took them as well. I took six pessary bags of six beers with an engraved glass in the middle and I'm glad to say that Gads gave me a very good discount. And going there, the same applied to going to Complin Saint-Quinabou, which is another twin town which is on the Seine. So you go there, the first thing you do is a trip to Paris, which is quite exciting because you go by coaching for outriders, police outriders and if people don't move when they're told, they book the side of their car, it's effective. So Complin is a very superior little town, it's on the Seine and you can find things there that you won't see anywhere else, I don't think, because the barges are up against the wall and go back that way out into the river. And there's boats coming across, so if you're on the barge and you cross all the other barges and get off. And the funniest thing, I just thought it was amazing, there's a little car on the roof of the barge. Isn't that strange? Then if you look a bit further, you'll find that there's a small, lit big ground post that they put their camera on the, on the ground with. It's fascinating and again, it's a lovely place and the people are very friendly and they've been across here a few times. And so you go to Paris to lay wreaths at the Arc de Triomphe and it's in honour of the unknown soldier. It is very touching, it's a beautiful place and it was very good. And the Pardon, it's called in Complin, is the Pondering Day and has every year, very similar to our Remembrance Day, to commemorate the people of Complin who lost their lives in the wars. I attended the service for Armistice Day, Holocaust Day, Armed Forces Day and many special church days. It's all very interesting because we have so many different churches in this town with a very diverse population and it really is good to see how people get on well together. And many youth associations, even only spending an hour, and it was all worthwhile because you can run a lot through children. They want their, it's a great pleasure to meet so many of people and to go to schools and listen to how they think and feel. Sometimes it may be laugh. At one meeting I was asked, how much was it paid for being Mayor? I said, I'm not paid for being Mayor. You wonder what it adds, and shortly take off it, all went round the road, it was very funny. No, we don't get paid, no. And I've lost my face, sorry. Children are great to be with because they're so straightforward and I enjoyed it and I ever laughed and we all got a laugh. I was asked if I did everything myself, I told them, did I drive myself? Do you drive here? Do you do this? No, because we're a team, the towns are good, he was there, the mayor's PA and the Mayor work together as a team. That's what we do, that's how we rely on each other, we help each other and that's how we get things done. We have very famous and important people visiting Ransay. The Princess Royal, Princess Anne, has been to visit the lifeboat station twice, a better of times. The Lady Colgrain, Lord Lieutenant of Kent, has been to Ransay several times to see the lifeboats and to the tunnels and to meet the Princess Royal and has recently to visit Coastwatch, of which she is president. We have the new Lord Warden of the Sinkpots and he has been to Ransay, has supported his tour to see all the sinkpots for himself. He was most impressed with Ransay, as being a sailor, he was interested to know how Ransay evolved from a small fishing village to a town full of people. We also have a wonderful football team. I can't remember how many matches they played without losing. Oh, that's, yes, and it's, and they're still carrying on doing it, sorry about that. And all I can say to that is, what we've got here in this town are amazing people and they are our greatest assets. Thank you.
Okay, the next councillor to introduce is councillor Green, he is the Chair of Finance and Charity for the Citizens.
Good evening, everybody. As I can imagine from the title, our committee is mainly about finances and council. We start with our annual budget for the town and about, um, to give every council a chance to have an input into it by the time the council has completed the survey and tells Thannick District Council what our budget will be for the following year, which happens at the end of January. All councillors are fully involved in enjoying the budget, leading to an annual preset, the council levits, which is of the order of a million pound a year. And hence, our part of your council tax, which amounts to around, less than around the year for that band B property. And during the year, I review the expenditure, I think, against our budget to make sure that we're not overspending in the, or underspending particularly categories. And if we are, the committee makes very good recommendations to the council to do their budgets around. The biggest cost to the council is the staff, you've heard about some of the staff doing. We've got very good, much of a staff in our community. This year, we've made changes to where we manage our staff. We've introduced annual assessments and performance-related pay benefits. This has made the operation for the town far and the Fancle and the team were successful adoption of these changes. That's the second biggest amount of our budget, as already been mentioned by the Chair, that the grants we hand out to organisations in the town. This is about development, we generate £1,000 a year. This year, we've greatly improved the process of delivering grants, by introducing egg grants through the town, enabling to give every application for a grant in fine detail before the council makes the final decision. This has given us all much more confidence that we're really handling it well. It is appropriate and produces the right sort of outcomes that we would like to see. Apart from the budget matters, we have a number of responsibilities for the council. We oversee the work of the climate change task group, which I think council asked in an update even shortly. This year, as a committee, we've accepted all the proposals that they've made. And the last one next year, do develop a plan for a rapid house to achieve net zero energy. So if any funding does become a downfall, which we hope it will, we are ready to take advantage of it. I'm very grateful that council asked in and for day and the other upside for a very successful year. The council-owned private unit also manages over 400 apartments across five sites in Ransay. This year, we've turned that convention of the allowance in a variety of ways to ensure that plots are well maintained and passed quickly within the term. And that motivation is now to increase from 311 people waiting to 170,000. This budget to ensure expenditure on the outlets, about 27,000 this year, is roughly balanced by the income, which was about 22,000 pounds this year. But we have a strategy duty to keep those two figures balanced. We have, we have hardworking council representatives operative on each of our sites and dedicated officers who has transferred to manage the outlets. The council has moved funds around at our bank accounts and we've achieved nearly £10,000 in banking trust over the last year. I'd like to thank the TPC Town Club for the extra work involved in this achievement and for the successful external audit of our accounts, which is very important. We've also responded to TDC's board budget review. We have argued that the newer residents should maintain the existing town boundaries and that the town council boards should be the same boundaries as the district council boards to avoid confusion at election times. Unfortunately, we've now had the launch and it looks as though the schedule of TDC elections won't take place due to the local urbanisation. But as far as we know, Ransay Town Council elections has still to take place in May 2027. That's a brief summary of what the motion has been doing for your half.
Thank you, ladies, thank you. The next up is councillor Ross, here. I'm going to have to ask you to speed up because we're short on time and we don't have an hour left, so I want to ensure that our guests can speak. If I can do it, I'm going to rush you, trash you though.
Hello, I've had the pleasure of chairing the Climate Change Subcommittee for the last couple of years and it's been absolutely brilliant and great stuff, there's still loads more to do. We have set up an action plan which sits in three parts. The first part is about things that we can do ourselves in the council and we've done a lot to improve our insulation, our recycling, a series of things like that. We are undertaking a detailed We are undertaking a detailed audit, as Dave mentioned, of Rutherford House to have a look at how we can make it as carbon-friendly as possible. And we are, we have put together an environmental action plan and we have measures that will allow us to see what progress we've made. And I'm looking over towards Dean, who is our officer support for the group, who's done a huge amount of that work and I'm immensely grateful to him for that. The second part of our work is community projects and many of you have seen some of those. We've been running the repair cafe here once a month. It's going to move up to the pie factory when this building is going to be refurbished. And we've been setting up the town shed, which is a woodwork project mostly aimed at older residents. And if you look in the far corner there, there's a fearsome orange creature, which is some kind of power saw that is going to go into our new premises on the twelve school lane, where they're hoping to move sometime in the next month. We have installed a water fountain on the main sand to get some money and should save for so that the town shed has been funded through grassification, which is spoken quite well to their well-being fund that we really support and we're very grateful. Things that we're working on at the moment, you will have seen some trees by the door. Those are fruit trees. We are, we have 17 left to give out to people out of 75, so we're really pleased with that. If you are up for a fruit tree in your front or your back garden, there is probably an application form on your seat or you can have a word with Dean or three later. Others we've worked on, we're working on with Kent County Council and with other councils, that's the third part of our, our action plan, is working with other councils. We've been working with TDC, for managing people, for example, to get information about how to install your house, how to get grants and so on. If anybody hasn't had that information and wants to know about it, please grab me and I will pass that on. And we've worked with Kent County Council, we actually did a ward walk yesterday in the harbour, looking at 20 mile house, feed the mints, pedestrian safety, those kinds of things. And finally, we're working with the fantastic council of repairing rather than replacing your domestic waste bin as a result of some work that we've done in the form of with Guy to actually put new mints on old bins where it's possible to do that and stop the sea glass getting into all those old mints. So those are some of the things we're working on. Thank you.
I'd just say a quick thank you for me to Councillor Rossley. So I was going to ask her a couple of years ago if she'd taken on, because I think she's the best person for it. And she's done a work that's been so, so good, so I'd really, really appreciate that.
I should have said, I'm sorry, I didn't, was that the interesting thing about our subcommittee is it's not just councils, we have some local, some residents on the committees as well. If anybody is interested in doing that committee, again, whoever, thank you.
Thank you. Next councillor is Councillor Huxley. Councillor Huxley is the Vice Chair of Town Promotion and because Pastor Chris is unwell and so I'll continue.
I'll be quick. Sorry to see you after the pastor. Pastor Chris, Councillor Huxley, Vice Chair of Information. Pastor Chris is the chair that she's in. I spoke to her and she's excited. She's worked very hard this year to make the committee's success and she'll be credited for all its achievements. I'd like to thank Simon Davies, also the active Ramsgate project manager for RTC, Rebecca Smith, our lovely Rebecca, town centre tourism manager, is that right? Julia Edwards is the TDC senior tourism officer for half the advice, been really useful. We talk about working with TDC, that's been really successful. And Dean Williams, our lovely Dean at the back, who's the marketing communications officer. So thanks for their hard work. And also Dean has part to our meeting superbly and kept it all organised. So I'd love to be wrong, but some, it's always the paperwork that our lights are all achieving, but my first one is the Raven route, which is a key wave-finding initiative that's been successfully implemented. Guy misses from Ramsgate train stations in the harbour through a series of signs and markers and a dedicated Ravens' repack. Have you seen it? So have you spotted Remy the Raven? He's everywhere, I've spotted him all over. And he's at the waterfall at the Raven supervising repair of things. Check him out, this is, he's doing what he should be. So things like before, I'm on through Ramsgate events calendar that's been launched to keep residents of visitors aware of what's happening. The bench end project has been completed, so that's painting the exit, public benches, particularly in the town centre, and that's the residents who we have to be back. Lots of decorative lighting, if you notice that, that's all we've installed in gross locations, particularly in the town centre, the crossroads, which makes it a more welcoming , vibrant atmosphere, particularly in the evenings and in the winter months. So Maniche's taking part with D-Day 80 anniversary preparations, tightening up the port inside the harbour. So that's the preparation for Operation Dynamo and the 80th anniversary and the renovation of the Dynamo Memorial by the harbour. So town operations have been designated 24,380 pounds to get the anniversary going. So that's the town's main event for 2025, which is great. So things like digital sharing, the dungeon sign in Toronto Harbour, sorting new signs with TDC and ensuring that areas presented in the best possible way. So we've also had plans for our Ramsgate Lumiere, Lumiere event in December, which should be coming in June and that's a signature attraction for the town. And I think that will bring lots of visitors into the town. So obviously in summer it's fine, but in winter it'll be more football and that goes with the eighties shops initiative, which we'll talk about later. And we've got better working relationship with TDC, as people have said, things like creative workshops, art shows and heritage tours and initiatives, and that's really good. And great things, we could do joint work with TDC on planting out all the farms, all the lighting, I don't think, on the east and west cliffs, cliffs and they look great. And that's really, really good initiative. And all the public parks that we've decided to sort of not take over from TDC, but we've kept them tidy, neat and tidy, sort of on top of what they do. So they're sort of smaller areas of the town, which you might know, or things like Crested Avenue, St. John's Seating Area, Broad Street, places like that. So Maxine Morgan and Technicians, they've also worked there. Anyway, it's all really good going on in the lakes. First thing, active Ramsgate week in 2024 is a really successful information. So the most outdoor activity, such as walking, cycling, water sports, that's been really good and that's brought people into the town and it's for the locals as well. So doing that again this year between 25th of May and the 1st of June, so keep an eye out for details on our websites, it's the active Ramsgate website and it's all going to be on social media. And then with that, there's 90,000 promotional leaflets being created, leaving distributed over the Ramsgate, the Kent and further along the field. On the 25th at Clackett Lane, you might see active Ramsgate leaflet, so give it out to people, encourage them to come and visit. So we've made it in. Decrepit lighting project, the Queen Street and York Street has been approved and the funding for that will be taken from the surplus town information budgets for the new financial year. Second last, there's been some issues with the electricity supply for the lights and vents in town centre, that's something we're looking into and hopefully get it sorted out there safely. That's due to ACC highways and the electricity company. So that needs better facilities, a bit of a poor power we need. And finally, we've had here good news, a total of 190,030 pounds has been allocated for town promotion activities for the next financial year, 2026, having been good funding, financing, utilization of maintenance on the town.
Thank you, Councillor Huxley. I just want to put one bit, I think, that you can say, I think, a very, very important part, and that is the return of Ramsgate Market.
Yes, yes.
Because we worked very hard on that and pushed the town industry council very hard to get that back and that back and some of us have put a lot, a lot of work into that and I think the town body is a different place. It's buzzing and I like, it's really good. Anyway, thank you for that, Councillor Huxley. Next is Councillor Nixon, actually in relation to Rutherford House with your city.
Yes, thank you. Well, I've always loved to see you here, thank you. And it's been an incredible journey for Rutherford House, from sitting in the empty for a while to really being used by the community. And it's like above beyond in its ability to help, and I'll give you an idea about this. So we do various things from the town shed, repair cafe, so on and so forth, but other people, you know, get into one of the tires. We do, I think on the Tuesday morning was chat time, basically a team between Chad and me, how lovely is that? We've had at least five people come up to us and said if they didn't have that every week, they basically wouldn't be speaking to anybody at all in the room. So it's those sorts of things that really matter to our community and that is you could tell them tonight, I mean, we are absolutely focused on Ramsgate and helping as many people as possible. So yes, people were hiring rooms upstairs, all sorts of different things and then people can hire someone off. When I say value added, I'll give you another example. There was, it was actually Greatill Street charity events that either the hall for a day, you know, the minimalist fee, we can do it for them, et cetera, et cetera. And they raised in a, in a scheme of about four grand. We couldn't use the four grand, but they managed to get that from just having a use of this building. And it's those sorts of projects and everything that we want to help people the best that we can. So we've had all sorts of things over the year and I cannot speak highly enough of Susie Humphreys, who's our events organizer. You know, when we, when we hired her, we gave this tremendous job that amazing people said, oh, if you could just do this, that'd be great, thank you, bye. And she did, you know, with bells on, I mean, what an amazing woman. So very much grateful to her as, as we are all our star for the team. It's come to the point now where we're winding down activities because of course we also start refurbishment, so we're closing things, some of the businesses started moving out and, and you, you know, you've heard already that some things are moving to other spaces. Ramsgate, Ramsgate, we don't want to stop them, we're trying to find other venues for them with the idea that eventually they'll come back, but even if they don't come back and they find their own home somewhere else, it means that we can do other things when this place is open. Some places move to customers' house, repair cafes, go to another venue, so on and so forth. You'll, you'll, you'll go onto our fantastic Instagram page and the website and please keep up to date because, you know, it's out there. With regards to refurbishment, we've considered trying to split the project into two stages. You can understand this is the real workforce of the building, this, this form down here and we want to concentrate on this very much to, to get it the best that it can be. We're going to light touch the upstairs as, as much as we can, we can do that later and so on and so forth. And we're talking first stage down here and so on and so forth. And that's the most important bit, if you can imagine. The idea, of course, is if there's funding available, because we are always on the hunt for a grant, I'm sure there are office in this room that are, but let's, you know, consider a grant and see if we can, we can help ourselves. So once the plan is finalized and the contract is identified, we're expecting refurbishment to take about eight months. Now, that's kind of a scenario, we're not talking about opening Christmas, but we all know that's, you know, there's always a few glitches in there. So just bear in mind that we are trying to push things forward as much as we can and we do have issues to go along with in the meanwhile. And one of those, truthfully, has been, it's not a bad thing, don't get me wrong, but the Granfolds have inquiry informed, you know, a need for a fire strategy plan. Now, that fire strategy plan all of a sudden had to be done by an independent body and so on and so forth. So again, there's a bit of a hiccup, right, who's doing this and what do we do with it and so on and so forth. Well, that has been submitted. The fire safety consultant was engaged and their report's completed this week. The design team, they're considering, and Fire Safety Services have two weeks to comment, but that has been handed in, so we are waiting. That is a crucial milestone for us to have been able to get done because again, it's something that happened in the middle of the project that was unexpected and we need to deal with it and rightly so, we should please, so, you know, community. While that's all going on and we're waiting for things to get done, as you can imagine, there's a lot of background work to be done. How does the booking system work? What licenses do we want, brand, marketing exercise, recruitment, so on and so forth? And let's not think Susie's going away anywhere soon, give her that, so we're trying to do this, there you go. We've been seeking legal advice on different management models. I mean, it's a big undertake, isn't it, this building? Do we want to manage it? Do we want to, you know, let somebody higher about to manage it for us? What's the benefit to the community, which is always what we consider? We're in discussion with the TDC for the technicians to relocate to the port, so they've been using the space, they've been using the containers out the back and obviously we've got parking and everything. But as, as Ramsgate Town Council has got bigger, more efficient and so on and so forth, you know, what we do in the services that we're providing might need more space and obviously we've got a young building aside when it happens, so we've managed to find them somewhere else and that is in the process of happening. I mean, basically that's it and we're happy to ask questions later. I'm really glad that you're here and like I said, please do follow us on social media because it's very exciting. I get the, I get the good faith, it's fun.
Wonderful, Councillor. I'll pass out the Councillor Hagen, sir, who is the, who is the Chair of the Plan and Infrastructure, Infrastructure Committee.
Hello. As far as planning is concerned, Ramsgate Town Council is a consulting team for applications which then go to town district council. We sent our comments to TDC, who considered the comments, but they don't always follow our advice. They, this year, we were consulted on 277 planning applications and we, we call in planning applications we want to look at and we did that with 54 applications. We raised objections on the grounds of, for example, boat development, parking concerns impact on, impact on neighbours. Just those, yes. And we do not always agree with each other, but the, there's a vote and the comments are sent to TDC. The neighbourhood plan has progressed and it has been looked at by town district council. The public engagement on the plan has been completed and a formal consultation will follow once TDC completes the screening. The committee commented on and raised objections to applications that resulted in significant biodiversity loss, such as a drive-through restaurant that would have caused a 65% reduction in habitat. We encourage biodiversity gains in major projects, including installation of bough boxes for issues like sw宁愿 and hazmat. The committee has expressed disappointment of not being included in the National Grid ceiling project consultations. And the infrastructure, which is a sort of wide thing. And two of us have been working on the highways improvement plan, which aims to address traffic management, pedestrian safety and road improvements. We have mentioned to explore a portable speed indicator device, which we've been using in Dunton Park Drive, where there have been fatalities and other accidents. It can be used elsewhere in Ramsgate, we may see it around. I can tell you what the struggle was to get this out of KCC, but we've managed it and they're, they're also coming up with a fixed plan at our town consultation. We also tested the speed in the upper high street and KCC agreed that it is suitable for a 20 mile house speed limit, but we're, we're going to, we're looking at how we can widen that. Discussions have been held on traffic calming measures and funding sources from other councils were explored and we welcome to improve. We welcomed improvements to pedestrian crossings, advocating for pelican crossings instead of standard crossings for better safety. That's about it.
Well, I'm assuming for some, no, sorry. Okay, moving on to item four. So we have, we have three guest presentations, which are important for our town. The first one, I'm going to be asking Louise Brooks from Ramsgate Space CIC, just to give you an introduction in relation to the empty shops in High Street, et cetera, et cetera. This is, this is rather the type. Can you spare me a second? The second will be from Rebecca Smith, our town settlement tourist manager on Diamond. And then the third one will be from Laura, the town park regarding London Government Reorganisation. This is, this is the main, main thing. So then, over to you, Louise.
Hi.
Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to come up?
I am, I'm going to come up and I've brought back fifteen for a prop, isn't it?
I was telling you, you've got five.
So I just thought it's useful to go. If you haven't seen about us already, we've got, we've got the front cover, so you can read about it. And we put this together when we had central government come down for an event last month. And we just wanted to show them what we were planning to do with our first space, which is Ramsgate Space HQ, which is in Albert Court, it's the old Jerry's coffee shop. So I'll talk you through who we are, what we do and how we can do that space. So the reason, so I've pulled together a series of slides, partly because I've pulled together variations of these slides about millions of different things I needed to do recently, largely going for grants and that sort of thing. So they are for a different intention, but it's a purpose. So Ramsgate Space CIC was set up essentially as a response to the growing number of empty shops in Ramsgate. I've lived here for eight years and the problems got worse over that period of time. My background's in regeneration, community led regeneration. And I've done a little lot around empty shops in other towns around the country. And it really felt that something was needed to be done here. So that's really where it stems from. We've done an initial audit in Ramsgate of the empty shops. It's between 18 and 24% that we have in Ramsgate and it is one of the highest in the country. The national average is 13.9% and ours is significantly higher. So as I'm sure you are aware, vacant shops don't deter landlords, they impact on antisocial behaviour and vandalism. They love football and they impact on surrounding businesses and the success of those. So the audit that we undertook revealed quite a significant problem. And that is that 60% of those empty spaces aren't being marketed with any commercial agents. So one of the key issues that we have is how to unlock those spaces. A lot of them are part of massive property portfolios. We have people like Rebecca, like TDC, who have been trying to work with these landlords over time and not really having success. So you can see the old new look, for example, in the high street. And so we really felt that it needed dedicated focus and putting together kind of all of these resources in a collaborative effort to try and tackle this problem. So Ramsgate Space CIC, we're dedicated to transforming the town centre by unlocking those empty shops. So there are a number of shops, it's very difficult for people to get hold of them. So the thing that we're told time and again is, well, I've tried to get hold of this shop, I can't get hold of it, I can't find a landlord. The terms just aren't very helpful, but you know, it's too expensive and asking for too much. And so our approach to try and unlock those and to come up with more flexible ways of working with landlords that will talk to us and then coming down on those landlords that won't talk to us and start to work out how we can unlock those spaces and make them available. Our mission is to create opportunities for local businesses, entrepreneurs and community organisations to test ideas in a low risk and supportive environment. Turning vacant spaces into thriving apartments. So this is who we are. So as I say, I've lived here for around eight years now. And I've got a background in regeneration, doing these sorts of things in other places across the UK. Georgie moved here fairly recently, while she was down the road in Westgate. She again has a similar background to me and she works in Camden at the moment, an organisation on Camden Town Unlimited. And they do an awful lot bringing empty spaces back into use for community benefit. And so she's a really good second to have. Caroline's lived in Ramsgate for about 20 years. She is, she has a really interesting background. She set up or kind of expanded and sold the, you know, the big bus company only go to large cities across the, across the world. And you have these double decker buses. So she was involved in expanding that across the world and then selling it on. So she knows a lot about places and what people are interested in in terms of places. And she's very into finances, which is the key thing. And then Emma Jones has recently moved to the area. And she, she's a business and trade ambassador to central government, as new businesses. And she supports small businesses through business support programmes, business training, that sort of thing. It's a platform called Enterprise Nation. And she was instrumental in bringing central government to Ramsgate last month. And we had a big event where we talked about various issues that Ramsgate is facing. And really tried to make sure that we were on the radar of the central government in terms of really identifying those kind of key issues that they're talking about, but in one place. So, you know, the issues around coastal communities, the issues around empty shops, and the issues around small businesses and how to, how to support them. And so that was a, that was a really beneficial event. And we started a lot of useful conversations, particularly around some of the policies that are coming down the line, how we can get some support. So you've got the high tribute mentor auctions, which I believe is going to be coming into, into force later on this year. And that means that when spaces are, shops are empty for 12 months or more, then the local authority can auction their leases. And that can be a game changer for some of those large spaces that have been empty for a long time. And the other policy that we're really keen to get on board with is the community right to buy. And so our long term ambition is that some of these spaces will be brought back into community hands so that we can take them out of the hands of these landlords that have them as just as a part, you know, of a property portfolio and don't really see the damage at a local level. Yeah, so what have we done to date? We've undertaken an audit, we've set up a working group, empty shops working group, with a lot of the councillors here. And what we do is we, we keep a regular focus on those empty spaces and what status it has and have a series of next actions. And we work collaboratively with RTC councillors and TDC staff, as well as other stakeholders across the town who can work together collaboratively to try and get some movement on these spaces. I've recently been, or we've recently been involved in supporting the setup of Ramsgate Traders Group. And we'll see that emerge soon. I think it's really important to have a strong traders group to support incoming traders, but also to help those businesses sustain and grow. And we had a, say, central government visit. We're working collaboratively with TDC on the rollout of the high street rental auctions. And we are just about to launch Ramsgate Space HQ at the old Jerry's. We've got loads of people that are interested in taking space and we're trying to work out how best to help them do that. We've got a number of volunteers who are very keen in getting some movement around the town. Lots of really talented people who are happy to give their time to us. And it seems to have a repeat interest. There's been a lot of coverage about it, so it, everyone really wants some movement here and some positive movement. So it feels as though, you know, there's that sort of round swell at the moment. So yes, our, our strategy is to identify and unlock those spaces. And that's working with landlords and introducing the idea of meanwhile use for landlords. So the idea that they can activate their spaces quickly and cover their overheads, but, you know, not risk a long term tenant. So if a long term tenant comes in, then that person can move out. But it means that you can get some activation and it means that it supports surrounding businesses. And it will increase the, the value of that property over time. Because obviously if people see it active, then it makes it more appealing. We're supporting businesses and entrepreneurs and we're looking at various business support programmes that we can put into place to support people into taking space so that when they do take those spaces on, they do it in a sustainable way. Because you have had various businesses that have disappeared from the high street because they perhaps didn't have particularly robust business plan. So the aim is to put steps in place to support those businesses in that sense. And then as I say, kind of using those policy and regulatory tools that are coming down the line. And I've been tapping Steve Back on compulsory purchase orders as well. Really looking at all of those regulatory things that we can use to, within our armoury, to really drive long term change. And then we're looking to energise the high street. So we'll, we'll look at probably working collaboratively on some of those spaces as well, various projects. So we've got our HQ, but we're looking at other projects down the line as well that will allow people to come in and test their ideas in quite a safe environment. But we want to try and secure those spaces and start activating them. And so yes, Albert Court. So we have been kind of softly opening up. The idea is that we'll have a day a week, at least, where people can come in and talk to us about their space needs. And we can signpost them and provide them with support in terms of what they need to do in terms of taking the space on. We can talk to them about the different types of leases and terms that they can use to negotiate with landlords and to aim to support them that way. We're also looking to activate the space with a variety of collaborative activities. So there are kind of key growth potential areas in Ramsgate, hospitality sector, creative sector, areas that have been identified in various regeneration plans and also work in other comparative seaside towns across the country. So we'll look to do some, some kind of pop up events, I suppose, that will bring people to the space and again allow people to test their ideas in quite a safe environment. And then we'll be providing that businesses enterprise support piece. And we'll also be looking to kind of host a number of talks and sort of panel events on various subjects that I think will take a part of that, that kind of road story for the town. So you've got the, you know, there are various levelling up and our regen funds within the town. And then you've got this new one that's coming down the line, which is the plan for neighbourhoods. And that's supposed to be specifically a community led regeneration initiative. And we really like to play a key role in, in having some of those conversations. And some of those key conversations with various people that we, you know, we're, we're talking to within the community and making sure that we've got kind of, you know, the community's got a leading voice on those topics. Yeah, that's it. I'll leave you to take those, you're welcome to grab one.
Thank you, Louise. It's, it's good to have someone like you in the town to put the energy in.
I'll go now.
I have to say, having been part of, part of these things and stuff.
We're going to run, so, but thank you, everyone.
Keep it coming.
If you, yeah, anyone has any questions, you know where I am. And find me on Instagram as well, ramsgatewonderfulspace.
I'll see you at Kent.
So we are going to be, we'll definitely be there on Thursday. But yeah, as we expand, we'll be more frequent, yeah. Thank you, guys.
All right, next one. Hey, you know Rebecca. Oh, I think he's a good sight. Can you guys see Operation Dynamo?
Yes. No.
You see?
So yeah, this is the much awaited return of the Dunkirk little ships. As you will know, it's, it was cancelled in 2020 for obvious reasons. So this, and what we've established actually is it's going to be, at the moment, 76 skippers of little ships side out to come to the event this year, which means it is a, we can say it's a record number, since 1940. Excuses being very small, but I'm also reading it now to you. So the Royal, Ramsgate Royal Heritage Harbour now, because we now have that status too. That's what it means in Seaport, as councillor Moore mentioned. And we are preparing for an unforgettable event. Fingers crossed for the winner. When 78 little Dunkirk ships gather to commemorate the 85th anniversary of Operation Dynamo. That will happen from the 16th of May. The boats in reality will know that they've started arriving in groups and drives that week because they live on the boats. And they mean to get here in good time because they all want to have this party. And so they will be arriving throughout the week. The Mainway Queen, she's one of the biggest and elderly, who owns the ships. And it's being told in, her engine doesn't work. So we will have her as a resident on the harbour for the full 10 day event. She will be arriving on the 16th of May. People can go on board her at the correct times. Hopefully she'll be on the Pershing Key near the iron license ship. And this, of course, I'm sure all of you know as Ramsgate residents, this is all to commemorate the heroic efforts in World War One on 27th of May, 1940, when Operation Dynamo was carried out and these fluffy little ships.
World War Two.
World War Two, yes, one.
You've got the day five.
Thank you, thank you, Louise, thank you, simply Mr Ramsgate. Yes, when over 338,000 troops were rescued from the shores of Dunkirk. And 40,000 of those soldiers, British and Allied troops, arrived in Ramsgate. And the people of Ramsgate came together to welcome them, feed them, clothe them, nurse them. And many of them arrived on the little ships as well. On the weekend that they arrived, we planned to have a bit of a festival. This was in 2015, this photo, just a practical appetite. And we'll have a sort of three day event really. And it's a festival down at the harbour. It will include hopefully fun fair, there'll be live music. We will have children's workshops, there's children's art installation happening in Albion Square Gardens, in Ellington Park with 400 boats. The community have also made over 3,000 little, we're, we're underway. And they'll be in St George's. So also on the Saturday team, we hope to have, you know, to launch our lighting projects that we've been doing around the harbour, which includes lighting. which includes lighting up the eighteen arches, picking out the architectural detail, which is a great two-star listed, um, structure. And also we're lighting up the obelisk, so there'll be lights installed underneath the ground, lighting and focusing on the, the obelisk. We hope to launch that on that Saturday, the seventeenth. And there'll also be some projections of happy news and stills, um, from the, the heroic rescue that took place, um, in Dunkirk and of their arrival here. Um, on the eighteenth, there'll be a town parade, very similar to the memorable Sunday parade. And it will start from the Saintus Church and go and head through town. Take a right at the top of Harbour Street because High Street's being closed for guests, as I've just discovered. So, and up to St George's Church, um, and there'll be, uh, that'd be, uh, quite a lovely ceremony that will be involving the skippers. Um, on the evening of the eighteenth, there's going to be a world premiere, which, um, is, um, a local, um, chap called Aidan Gray's, um, conception from many years ago. And it's been shelved and we've resurrected it and it's really taken shape now with a local composer, Donna McKennitt, um, soprano, tenor, a hundred and fifty people in the choir, orchestra. And then basically it's called The Little Ships in Concert. And it will happen around five thirty on Sunday evening. Um, and it will be a call to the boats. So it should be quite an amazing performance if the weather's good. They can't rehearse it though, and these boats, they can be, they are renovating these little ships. And they have, one of them has got an unfortunate horn that goes. They should really hold it, but muffled somehow, right, at least until the end. Um, but that's, that's going to be an amazing thing. It'll start with the air raid sirens. It will feel, it's a very, um, with ethereal feel to it as it starts. And then there'll be, um, ultra singers joined by the choir and orchestra. So it's going to be this crescendo with all the boats then responding. Um, and then the supporting boats, there'll be a hundred of those supporting the little ships, they will also join in. So it's going to be this massive crescendo of sound just for this special event. Um, and that will kind of tie off the, that weekend of celebrations. And we've talked about the whole celebration, because many people say it's a commemoration. This is about something that happened in war. But actually, this is possibly the last time, well, in fact, it will be the very first time there's no surviving veterans. But it's also about celebrating that these little ships are being looked after and, and maintained. And they're still here to tell that story with their skippers. Um, so the association with Dunkirk Little Ships have allowed us to say, celebrate in life. They feel it is, it is a celebration and it's been ten years. So, um, on the eighteenth, we are hoping, it's still not confirmed, but we're hoping to have a Royal Marines Parade, uh, the Royal Marines Band who come down and parade. And we should have some special guests, including, uh, H R H, uh, Prince Michael of Kent, um, among others. And there are quite a few others that will be coming to join the skippers for that parade and then a short service at Saint, the Saintus Church. And then they will, uh, Prince Michael of Kent will take us a link from the Royal Marines and they will parade hopefully up and down Harbour Parade. Um, that's happening on Tuesday. Plus, there's now going to be a three-day film festival courtesy of the Granville Cinema or Theatre, um, who will be showing three Dunkirk related films over the course of those three days. Um, that's another highlight of the event from the nineteenth.
Uh, sorry, nineteenth, twenty-first.
Yeah.
All free. So maybe the funds have been given, been donated, rejected, or has been raised. Um, I believe it is No Calorie Which We Serve, actually the first one, which is nineteen forty-two film, which is credited with bringing a great amount of support from around the world to Britain. That may just be, then the nineteen forty-four one, which is from the Hills, which was used to hold a lot of boats and features Ramsgate, I believe, in the film. And then the crew is getting rights to, uh, Crystal Moors twenty seventeen. So the first film has been shown in the church panel and it's all free. Six hundred tickets, probably.
A lovely theme, a camp answer, of course.
Not being, not being, not being.
Well, Guy has actually, um, designed a poster for that contest, which the Granville have approved and they're quite astounded. Um, but the little ships will actually then on Wednesday, they will leave the harbour. Now, this is for the early birds, I'm not one of them. And they will be leaving the harbour from six AM on the twenty-first, twenty-first. So if you know any people that are up at that ridiculous o'clock, please encourage them to go down to the, uh, Lydian House and wave them off. Um, as, as we said, we will have the film festival and other events. There's lots of events happening around to get tunnels, um, throughout those ten days. And then the little ships after their, their, um, their return, they'll be over in Dunkirk for the ten days, but then they will return, um, on the back of the day, May twenty-sixth. And that will be at the better time of four, yeah. Um, and they should be hopefully standing there as the bugler.
I saw where did you end it and they couldn't come in.
Yes, it is an eight-hour journey from Dunkirk and to Ramsgate and vice versa. Um, working with Guy, again, Ramsgate, then the harbour. We will have a full programme on there, we'll be doing a special edition. So, um, there, there will be obviously opportunities. There are opportunities for volunteers, there will always be litter pickers and lots of other things that ha- help people find their way around, um, Ramsgate and wherever other things happen. So, um, yeah, it's just to, just to say that, um, we look forward to seeing everybody there and please encourage neighbours and people that you know and share any media, social media content that you see. Um, and let's make this a really great, memorable festival for Ramsgate.
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, number one, well, did that word of Rebecca's putting it to you? It was amazing. Uh, plus the lights that she's got, uh, all around the harbour, arches and stuff. So, uh, she's a boon to have the Ramsgate tap town. She's another one with a load of energy.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you, Rebecca. Right, last one, I'll pass over to Laura at Town Clark. Uh, she's just going to take you through a reorganisation. Uh, it's a bit heavy, but.
I'm asking for the job.
I'm asking for the job, yeah. So we'll get asked your, your questions.
Is everyone aware of the, the gist of the proposal? That Kent County Council and the district councils, including Vanet, are going to be disbanded and replaced by unitary authorities? That's, that's not new news.
No.
Um, and, uh, there's a tremendous amount of information on T D C and K C C's website. Um, I'm not necessarily really sharing things, um, that, that only the council is brilliant to. It, it's in the public domain. Um, Asia Clark, I'm particularly interested in, um, what is going to happen to the town council? Or what, or we're going to play in the future? Um, but one thing is that, uh, Clark's very good at networking. And so, um, there's, there's quite a lot of similar sized towns around the country who are already in unitary areas. And I'm already new passion with their clerks, finding out how, how, how did they expand? What, how did they change and, um, it's worth noting that, um, devolution and local government, the organisation is not something that's new. Um, there's already a lot of unitary areas, um, around the country. And it's not something that the whole country is a market model once. These, um, areas that want to are now being encouraged to, to go through this process. So, um, the Minister of State and Local Government and English Devolution who's overseeing the process. All right, uh, so on the twenty-first of March, K C C made indicative plans for unitary areas. And if you, um, um, if, if you Google Kent County Council Devolution, it will take you straight through to a page where you can see exactly what Kent County Council responded. And it was Kent County Council were leading in consultation, you know, working with the districts and, uh, Mainway Unitary. It was, uh, it was, it was quite a, a generic submission. It's, it's along the lines of, yes, we're on board, we're ready to do this. There was no specifics about areas. Um, and then in, uh, between now and November, several servants will then work with, um, councillors in Kent to, to finalize a plan. And the, the, I think perhaps the basis is the geographical area. And one of the things I think is going to be an underpinning force is, uh, how to make areas financially viable. There's no point setting up a unitary that actually can't afford to provide the funds that it requires. In January twenty-sixth, Jane Monahan, the N P will confirm this decision. I think there, there will be a consultation that will start then and end in May. Whereas I certainly feel there'll be a consultation in May, but I think that might be the ending of it. Um, but in terms of consultation, I think this will be along the lines of the minister has minded to, please comment. I think we should take it that this is something that is happening. The question is not going to be, do you want this? It, this, this is a process that will be happening. Um, but obviously it will be put to respond if there's been anything that's, uh, hadn't been understood about the geographical area, anything that's been missed. And then almost twenty-sixth, the final decision will be made. May twenty-seven, Shadow of the Revolution will be elected. So, um, councillors for the new unitary areas will be elected. The district council is due to have elections in May twenty twenty-seven, as how you mentioned. I think it's reasonable that they will be, um, technically closed out. Um, uh, the town councils will still have their electories, um, in that year. And I think this is, this could be the opportune time when also where there's gaps, where there are town and parish councils, if areas want them. I think that could be an opportunity to start adding them in, for example, Margate. Um, also there is, um, boundary changes coming into that, which is a, uh, a separate matter, but another thing to add into the mixing of that. And then between May twenty-seven and May twenty-eight, one year of transfer of assets. And this. And then May twenty twenty-eight, best ending, when the district and county councils will cease to exist. So even though Kent was not actually, sorry, even though Kent was not actually, um, is not actually on the priority, devolution priority programme, this seems quite a, a quick turnaround. Um, I, I don't know whether this, this, this vote convinced could take longer, but I believe this is, this is the current plan. So with regard to the unitary areas, um, unitary areas are intended to have over half a million people on them. Um, but in Kent, we've got one point eight million people. So either you would look at having three areas, three unitary areas with more than half a million people or possibly four areas each with less. Um, and I expect that the, the finances are going to play, uh, of each area is in place in a different role. Kent County Council commissioned a report to start drafting, um, indicative areas. And these are the four options that were included in that report. Um, this, this report is available on T D C's website. Um, so if you can't see it, it's, it is available online. Um, the, the full report is actually really interesting if you're into statistics and facts and figures and demographics because it starts to write down, um, who is living there and what their requirements are. This, this report, these options were not submitted to the government on the twenty-first of March. But I think this is the report, this will, will be the foundation of the discussions. Um, one of the things that I, I want to pick up, um, county council and the district councils are all communicating very well with each other, but they're not necessarily in agreement as to what, what the model should look like. And there's different parts of the county have got very different ideas about who they want their, their group to be. Uh, one thing that is worthwhile remembering that I, I have reference to, um, the local government, the organisation in the nineteen seventies. The, the wheel was reinvented then. And this time, actually, the legislation that's underpinning what we do is not changing. Um, so in terms of the town council, we can still do the, the same things that we can do now. And so when you look at what T D C does, and my apologies for that, if anyone's colourblind, but I mean, if you look at T D C, what T D C does, the red things, we have no legal power to, to do those. We can maybe do some things around environmental protection, um, but the green areas are potentially things that the town council could, um, have a role in in the future. Also. Dover, Farnham and Canterbury, this, um, if, as an example, if this, if this was going to be our unitary group, there's actually quite a lot of difference, um, just between our neighbours. I mean, in terms of, and again, it's about town and parish councils. So I mean, Dover has been fully parished, um, for decades. South Town Council was created in the seventies, Dover in the year of the nineties. There's already a lot more that the district councils have passed down to the town and parishes, um, like financing of the public conveniences. In Vanet, I think where there hasn't been a Margate town council, there, there's been a gap. Um, but other than Margate, there, there's been some, uh, you know, the rest of the parishes covered. Um, if you look over in Canterbury, there's no town councils. The Burnaby, Bristow and Canterbury, none of them have town councils. Um, and so there's no devolution. But I think when the, um, the unitary area is agreed, there's going to need to be quite a discussion between the, the existing district councils to find out what, what do you do, what have you passed on? Um, because Dover's not going to want, uh, uh, the people of Farnham and Canterbury to still have their public conveniences when the people in Dover, um, they're being paid for by the town and parishes. So there's, there's quite a lot around this to, to think, well, what, uh, what are other people doing? And how do we kind of standardize things across the unitary? Another thing that we've been looking at is what do similarly, similarly sized towns, um, in unitary areas, what, what do they do, what do they look like? I mean, we've, we've looked at, um, town councils and Salisbury, Farnham, Bridgeport to Dunstable, who have, um, similar population size to Ramsgate. And looking at Precept is not actually a very useful, um, indicator because it doesn't, you can quite often have a lot of them come from elsewhere. Um, it also, you know, it's very, very often depending on what assets and services there are. But there is, there is a lot of evidence and experience out there for town councils to be doing a lot more. And it's something that the town councillors have met and considered. And a letter has been. And a letter has been drafted for the district, to go to the district and county councils, to say that we welcome the opportunity to engage in discussion regarding the future governance of our area and the potential devolution of the local services. We're particularly interested in open spaces, artefacts and assets. We believe that devolving services to Ramsgate Town Council would ensure that they are managed in a way that reflects the priorities of our community, while also allowing the greater responsibility of local accountability. I haven't read the whole letter, I'm sure we can put this on our website. But this to let you know that it is something that the town council is ready for, for these discussions to take place. At the moment, I think the district and the county council are very busy considering their own houses. But we are the only avenue that's available to them, the whole of passing things along. They're going to have these huge tasks, responsibilities to undertake. Education, adult and children's social services, highways. And so short of either stopping doing things, saying things, it's passed on to the internal parish council. So it's a discussion that this council is ready to have.
Before I was, the big one's due to finish at eight thirty. Obviously, we've got a big group of our last questions, so I'm not going to finish yet, after you're all over the ground. If you say with the local government reorganisation that there is a long, hard way to go. It's very complicated. And it'll be interesting to see how things pan out. But even so, even though this is, well, I'm on up until twenty twenty-eight. Town clerk and myself, for me, we will set town council tomorrow to start the process of seeing what we can do and how we can work together to try and make things work as best as we can. And then that goes out to the parishes as well.